Study session. Trying to get used to the echo here in my.
Kind of hard to hear.
Uh, let's see, let's call roll, please.
Mayor Mangreli.
Here.
Mayor Protem Or.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Here.
Councilman Good.
Present.
Councilmember Rusing.
Here.
Councilwoman Scholl.
Here.
And Councilman Sishka.
Here.
All are present.
All right, thank you for that. Uh, we have two items on the agenda today. Uh, do you want me to talk about Zoom at this point in regard to how they do public comment?
Yes, please, that would be great.
Okay, I'll do my best and you can correct me where I'm wrong.
Okay.
Uh, if you're on Zoom, there's a, an opportunity to raise your hand if you would like to speak. So the clerk will be watching for that. And at the end of each item, uh, she will bring you into, uh, the comment, uh, at the end of the agenda item, if you raise your hand. What did I miss?
That's correct. So we'll call for public comment after each item. Members of the public that wish timed for three minutes and then, um, they will be muted once again.
That, so let's move on to item 3A, please.
Presentation on the pavement management integration for use in the monitoring, updating and programming of pavement and preservation projects.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Sarah, would you want to get our folks linked in then? So this afternoon, uh, we have like the next phase of pavement management program. So over time, we've brought a couple of presentations forward to you in regards to pavement management program. We've gone through the evaluation of our streets, how that was done, all the information that we got out of it. And now we're moving into or have moved into the next phase where all of that information has been input into Lucity, which is our infrastructure improvement, um, software and program that we manage all the work that we do within utilities, streets, uh, rec services uses it, um, as well as, uh, solid waste. And, uh, and then on the street side, all the pavement, uh, information evaluation that is in there as well. So now this brings together the, uh, proximity component, uh, for projects. And it will be able to print out, uh, budgets, annual, up to five years, things like that. We give the program a value that we have for, uh, our budget. And then it divvies up those monies into different methods of our pavement management. And then will give us the list of the streets. So, uh, we're going to have, uh, folks that are down at Public Works zoom in here. We have Eric Stewart, our city engineer, as well as Zach Thomason with IMS, who has performed the evaluation of the streets and then worked with, uh, inputting the information into Lucity as well. So they, they have it, Sarah, so now they need to take over.
Yes, they're ready to put up their presentation, they can do that.
Eric or Carrie, are you there to do that?
We need Sarah to share her screen, or to stop sharing her screen.
There we go, we're getting closer.
Thank you.
All right, and good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Uh, my name is Zach Thomason, uh, with IMS. I am the Director of Client Services. And, uh, today we're going to talk about the 2020 state of the roadway network, uh, here in Prescott. And, uh, the first thing that I like to start with is the scale of investment. How big is this asset that we are tasked with maintaining, uh, on a daily basis? And quite frankly, uh, the city owns and maintains approximately 293 centerline miles of roadway. That makes your road network the single largest visible asset that folks see and feel on a daily basis. Uh, and that asset is valued at $744,000 per mile or a total aggregate of $218 million. So this is a huge asset, uh, that city staff is tasked with, uh, maintaining on a daily basis. Uh, now if we take an early look at the condition score, the network average PCI score is a 59, which lands in the fair category if we were to use a descriptive term. Uh, now PCI is a pavement condition index that ranks the health of a road on a zero to 100 scale. So zero is absolutely horrible turning back to gravel and 100 is a perfectly brand new road paved yesterday. So all roads combined, uh, the city's average is a 59, it's considered fair. And we'll put that into context here in the next few slides. Uh, the city's backlog is at 23.6%. Now backlog is all the big ticket work that's to be done in the city. It's the full reconstruction candidates and it's the partial reconstruction candidates. Consider it all of the expensive, very costly work that's to be done in the city. Uh, now in terms of a target, we generally like to see backlog less than or equal to 15% as a maximum number. And, and, um, i- in the next few slides, uh, we'll put that into context and we'll talk about why, uh, from a financial perspective as well. So why do pavement management in the first place? Uh, and the concept is very, very simple. If you see that red line there on the screen, that represents the typical deterioration of a pavement. And in the first 40% of a pavement's life, it only has a 15% drop in quality. So it's a fairly shallow rate of deterioration. But in the next 15% of that pavement's life, right about there, you can see that it has a 40% drop in quality. So that's this cliff here, so to speak. So it behooves us to maintain roads in good condition before they fall off that cliff, as opposed to deferring maintenance and spending eight dollars later, uh, rebuilding them. Uh, and in terms of pavement management, if we can capture roads in their target zone, we can maximize the life of the road at the absolute lowest cost. And again, here you will see that typical deterioration of a pavement, that's this line here. And if we can capture roads in this target zone, we can extend the life of each road at the absolute lowest cost. Now that target zone is, uh, roughly roads that fall between a PCI score of about a 60 and an 85. So from a pavement management perspective, there's a lot of cost benefit reasons in capturing these roads. But pavement management is a balanced approach. We can't simply, uh, focus our attention here. We have roads, uh, that fall into all of these different condition categories. And we're going to talk about how the pavement management system uses optimization and prioritization to make sure that we're getting the biggest bang for our buck while tackling some of the worst roads at the same time and maintaining the good roads in the network. Uh, so some tools that we use to race the streets, that's the laser road surface tester that you see there. Uh, that van is equipped with high-speed lasers, HD cameras and GPS technology. And its job is to assess the condition of every block, every segment of road that the city maintains. So as it drives the road, it's collecting a full suite of pavement distresses, uh, ranging from roughness to rutting, various types of cracking, distortions, bleeding, potholes, you name it. It's capturing all of this information such that we can calculate a PCI score for every individual block uh, of road that the city maintains. And then we combine those to form that network average score for the city as a whole. So we've talked a little bit about PCI, we know what we use to collect the data. Uh, let's take a look at what it looks like in the field, okay? So these are the very poor roads that score between a zero and a 25 on the PCI scale. These are roads that have base and structural fail- uh, failures, they have a lot of rutting and they have a lot of cracking. Uh, now to be clear, roads in this category are far past the point of overlay-based rehabilitation. We can't simply slap an overlay on these roads. They require full reconstruction of the surface and base. Uh, rehabs on these roads are often driven by citizen complaints and safety does become a concern at a very low PCI. So as PCI drops below say a 10, potholes and distortions can form very rapidly. So as they get that low, we do need to make sure that we're monitoring, uh, those roads frequently. Now if we jump up a bit, uh, we're going to skip a few condition categories, uh, for the sake of time. Uh, but these are roads that land in the fair category between a 50 and a 60. So roads in this category, they do have progressive cracking, but they have fewer base failures and they have localized distresses. So roads in this category would be an optimum timing for a thin to a moderate overlay. And, and there's a lot of benefits in selecting these streets that result in an early lower cost and a greater return because we're doing less grinding and we're using thinner rehab strategies as well. And if we, uh, jump a few more categories up, these are the very good roads that score between a 70 and an 85. They have very few distresses, they have no rutting, they have no base failures. Uh, a road in this condition category, uh, is a good candidate for some crack seal with a surface treatment, uh, on the asphalt roads. And this is how we start extending the pavement life at the lowest cost. So roads in this category represent roads in that target zone where we can extend the life of the road at the absolute lowest cost and get the biggest bang for our buck. Uh, so again, we've talked about PCI, we know what it looks like now. Uh, let's take a look at the current PCI condition scores, uh, that were calculated, uh, using the city's pavement management program, Lucity. So there's three metrics of health that we use to assess any given agency. And the first is the network average PCI score. Uh, now we know that your average is a 59. Nationally, uh, the average that we see is between a 60 and a 65. So we're at the lower end of the averages and slightly below that average mark. And what it tells us is, is as the average PCI drops below a 60, we tend to have to rely on costlier rehabs to keep up with our maintenance. So it simply costs more to maintain our network over time as a result of the current condition. But it's very close. The next metric of health is backlog, we talked about this one earlier. So the city's current backlog is at 23.6%. Generally, we like to see, uh, a backlog less than or equal to 15%. And that's actually our maximum recommended mark to any given agency. Uh, and I'll put that into context. Anything less than 10% in terms of backlog is considered financially ideal from a pavement management perspective. Uh, it's just largely unaffordable. Most agencies can't afford to fund the pavement program to keep backlog below that 10% mark. 12% is what we would consider average and manageable, uh, by your average agency, with 15% becoming that maximum recommended mark. Now, the reason that's the maximum mark is because as backlog approaches and exceeds, uh, 20%, it can effectively spiral out of control faster than we can pump capital into the pavement management program. Uh, so quite simply is without a large influx of funds to serve the pavement management program, backlog begins to grow at an alarming rate and it grows at a very rapid rate, uh, as well. And the last metric of health that we look la- that, uh, that we look at is the percent of excellent roads. So how many roads scored above a PCI score throughout the network? Uh, and, uh, generally we like to see a bare bones minimum of 15% of the network falling into that category. Uh, the city was close at about 13.6% of the roadway network falling into that category. So we fell shy on some of the metrics of health that we use to assess agencies. So we already know, before we've run the analysis in the pavement management program, that our biggest and single, our, our single largest challenge from a pavement management perspective is going to be arresting the growth in backlog and potentially, uh, declining backlog. So while we're all focused here on these very poor and poor roads to reduce backlog, we have to remember the entire network is deteriorating at the same time. So these roads are going to want to dump, uh, excuse me, uh, to dump into backlog at the same time as well. So pavement management is again, that balanced approach where, where we do have to tackle backlog, but we have to make sure that we mitigate deterioration over time. Uh, so let's talk about projects within the pavement management system. So the city uses a pavement management system called Lucity. It's a very, it's a very powerful pavement management system and, uh, um, we're going to talk about some of the, uh, differentiators that, that, uh, city staff is taking advantage of by using that program. So within the pavement management program, we have all these segments and all these blocks that have PCI scores. Uh, but we know the city does not do work on a block-by-block basis. It would not be cost-effective, nothing is within proximity to each other. Uh, and we wouldn't be taking advantage of mobilization. It just wouldn't make much sense from a pavement management perspective. So within the pavement management program, we build what we call supersegments. And supersegments are simply projects that are formed by stapling multiple blocks of light condition together such that we can run the analysis against those projects. Uh, and of course, we form projects, uh, by using sound constraints such as pavement type, meaning you can't glue asphalt to concrete condition. They have to be relatively the same condition such that we can apply a similar, uh, rehab. And they have to be within proximity to one another. That is a big deal in the pavement management program, uh, such that we take advantage of, of, of location of equipment, uh, that contractors mobilize as well. In addition to that, by tackling projects on a proximity basis, we disturb citizens less. So we get in once, we tackle a cluster of roads or maybe even an entire neighborhood that we're going to talk about, uh, here on the next few slides. Uh, and it's generally one of the most popular approaches. So in this case, we built the projects within the pavement management system. I'm going to click here so we can see what those look like. And you can see this map of colors. Now the colors are really meaningless, other than they're used to differentiate the size of the projects. So a good one to take a look at is this pink one right here at the Z to C. This is one single project within the pavement management program, but it represents three blocks or three segments in the city's inventory. So we glued these segments together such that the same rehab can be applied and such that they're triggered at the same time. This is generally the best in terms of cost efficiency. So this is where we start building projects using a clustered approach that we call an on-street, side-street approach. And all that means is, is as the project runs down the street that it's on, it attempts to pick up side streets such that we don't orphan any segments or forget segments, uh, that are potentially left behind. Now for most pavement management programs, this is where it stops. Uh, and you have these large projects that still feel a little scattered about. Now with the city's pavement management program, within Lucity, you have the ability to link, uh, projects together based on geography. So what this means is, is we can clean out whole neighborhoods at the same time. Get in once, disturb the citizens, uh, once and get out. And what that looks like if we zoom in here, this is a good example. These two neighborhoods here, within the pavement management program, have been linked together. And the powerful part about that is there can be multiple types of projects in here. There could be a full surface removal in here, which is a partial reconstruction. There could be a thin overlay candidate in here as well. Everything still gets what it needs, but the advantage here is that we're triggering everything at the same time, such that it happens in the same year, uh, and at that same time. So that's what we've done, uh, with the city's, uh, pavement management program. Uh, so the neighborhood-based approach is very similar to the on-street, side-street approach that I showed you earlier. We're just, uh, making those clusters a little bit larger and using neighborhood boundaries to form, uh, some of those, uh, projects. Um, I also mentioned that the first rehab candidate selected in that project triggers all the rest to come along for the ride as well. Now in terms of operating parameters, a lot of folks, someone always asks, and they should. Someone always asks, well, why did that road get selected and not this one? Why didn't my road get selected? And oftentimes, it's difficult to explain how and why a pavement management program, uh, prioritizes. So I'm going to attempt to break that down very simply. There's two words that you were, that, uh, uh, that, that you'll hear, uh, for any given pavement management program. Those are prioritization and optimization. So let's break those down very simply. Prioritization is simply a ranking of streets. Whatever factors we use in terms of what we consider priorities, prioritization is simply a ranking of streets from highest to lowest. That's it, okay? And we'll talk about the factors that we use, but in terms of priorities, it's just a list. Optimization is the process of maximizing network benefit, meaning how do we get the biggest bang for our buck in the pavement management program? And we do that by utilizing cost benefit, such as targeting those roads in that target zone. And we also do that by using cost of deferral. And this is where we look at the cost of deferring road candidates over time. What this allows us to do is it allows us to pick up roads that are generally in worse condition. And I'll explain that here in the next couple of slides. But prioritization and optimization are the two key factors or the two key uses of the city's pavement management program. Uh, the first most common type of prioritization that I think everyone has heard of is a worst-first approach. So worst-first is simply where you line up the streets from worst condition to best condition and start tackling at the bottom. So you're tackling, uh, the worst offenders. Unfortunately, it's not financially efficient from a pavement management perspective. Uh, and the best analogy that I can give you is that, uh, roads are very similar to the cars that we drive on a daily basis. So when we purchase a car, we fully intend to change the oil, flush the coolant, rotate the tires in an effort to maximize the life of the vehicle at the absolute lowest cost. Cause we want to get our biggest bang for our buck. But what we've done is we've made a conscious decision to change the oil every 3,000 miles instead of swapping the engine every 30,000 miles, okay? So with any asset that we have in our lives, whether it's our cars or our facilities or our buildings, it behooves us to maintain, uh, this asset as opposed to simply tackling things when they need total reconstruction. But it is a prioritization methodology and one of the simplest to understand, which is why I wanted to show it. Uh, so within the pavement management program that the city has, we use sound priority factors to prioritize what gets selected and when. The first is by functional classification. So we see majors and minors. What that means is, is arterial roads, the big wide roads with multiple lanes that receive heavy traffic, serve commerce. Uh, those have the highest priority in the pavement management system, followed by the collector roads that feed folks, uh, to their neighborhoods or feed folks to, uh, retail areas. And then followed by the local roads. And the reason that's the priority is because arterials deteriorate at a more rapid rate than collectors and collectors more rapid than locals. So it's, it's, it's certainly using sound engineering to start prioritizing. The next is by pavement type. Asphalt roads have a higher priority than concrete roads. And the reason there is simple, asphalt roads deteriorate at a more rapid rate than concrete and therefore need to be touched more often. And then lastly, we use the strength of the road. So the subgrade strength of the road, uh, as a priority factor. Meaning roads that are considered weak have a higher priority than roads that are considered strong. And the reason for that is because they are deteriorating at a more rapid rate. So all of these are factors that are used in the pavement management program to select rehab candidates over time. Now the biggest and most important factor, and certainly one of my favorites, is critical or needier selection. I talked about cost of deferral before. This is used to sequence and select roadway candidates within the city's pavement management program. Uh, so to give you a good example, if a road that's scoring between a 40 and a 43, uh, is not selected in the pavement management program, it has the highest cost of deferral. And that's because it slips from a thick overlay to a partial reconstruction candidate. So in terms of cost of deferment and optimization, that road between a 40 and a 43, that's not in very good shape, has the highest cost of deferral and has one of the highest priorities in the pavement management program. And I'll show you what that looks like here in the next couple of slides, uh, just to bring it all together. Uh, so, uh, I talked for a bit there, this is what it looks like in the pavement management system. I know it's not much to look at, it's a bunch of tables with some really cool math behind the scenes. Uh, but we can see here that we start with highest priority roads, which is a major arterial, that's asphalt and it's weak. We talked about that, it's the highest priority, uh, and so on and so forth down the list. Now, let's take a look at what that looks like graphically, because that's sometimes kind of hard to understand. Within the pavement management program, we have selection criteria that we just discussed. And on this graph here, you can see each of these boxes represents a rehab category within the pavement management system. So if someone wanted to know, well, what gets selected first? I'm going to click here and we can see that critical thick overlays, those roads that I just talked about, between about a 40 and a 43 are priority number one, because they have the highest cost of deferral. If we don't capture them now, they're going to cost us exponentially more later. Priority number two is the partial reconstruction. So this is the start of backlog, but these roads are salvageable, meaning they need a full surface removal, maybe a few localized base repairs, uh, but we can salvage these roads. These, uh, these have a high cost of deferral. So we want to capture a few of these before they slip into total reconstruction. And then the third priority is where we jump over to that target zone that I mentioned earlier. So the road's in that good category, uh, between a 60, uh, and in this case, uh, about a 75, where we can apply lightweight surface treatments, uh, to ma- to extend the life of the road at the absolute lowest cost. And if I click through here, we see the fourth and fifth priorities, uh, and then the sixth. So in terms of selection, we're using optimization in terms of cost of deferral and sound engineering priority factors such as functional class, pavement type and strength to select those roads. Uh, and again, we already talked about, uh, the highest cost of deferral being priority one. That's those critical thick overlay candidates that are major arterials and considered structurally weak. Uh, so in terms of the, uh, analysis methodology, we know funding is limited. We don't have a magical blank check, uh, to fix all roads in, uh, like new condition. Uh, we also know the city places a value on all its roadways, its arterials, its collectors and local roads. So it's important that we balance the pavement management program. Uh, and what we want to do from a pavement management perspective is identify the annual budget needed to maintain current PCI, so that 59, as well as the budget needed to maintain backlog at 23.6%. Uh, we know we need to improve from there, but those set the standard, those set some of the, the, uh, the tone in the pavement analysis. We want to examine the effects of current funding levels in the program and we want to prevent deterioration in pavement quality. Uh, and a few notes here, pavement management again is priority-based, it's not worst-first. So we are not opting to swap the engine every 30,000 miles in our vehicles. We're assuming we're going to do, uh, the oil changes and coolant flushes. Uh, and then some of the numbers that you're going to see here, ADA compliance is not included in these numbers. Uh, uh, there's no cost of inflation. So the numbers you see here are for the pavement management program, uh, alone. So this is the, uh, budget analysis graph that was run in the pavement management program. You have time on the x-axis here for five years and you have the resultant PCI, uh, at the different funding levels. Uh, and a few of the models that I want to point out, this blue line that rises to the sky sharply here, that's that magical blank check. So to fix all roads in like-new condition, we know we would need on the order of about a hundred and ten million dollars to give everything what it needs based on its current condition. We always start with those fix-alls and a do-nothing to start setting the tone. So if we spent zero dollars over the next five years, we know that the network average PCI would continue to decline to an average of 51 and more importantly, backlog, uh, would skyrocket to 33%, okay? Uh, the next model I want to show you is this relatively flat line, this red line here. This is what we call a steady-state PCI budget, meaning this budget will maintain your current network average PCI of a 59. However, what it doesn't do is it does not begin to arrest the growth in backlog. So while we can maintain the network average by pushing some roads to the right and letting some roads slide to the left, it does not arrest the growth in backlog. So we know it's not enough, uh, um, to improve on the backlog category. And then this green line, the solid green line that you see here, oop, my mouse disappeared on me, uh, that solid green line that you see there, uh, uh, at the top there, uh, that is the city's goal budget. Uh, so that's the goal target budget of 8.5 million dollars per year. So if we could acquire 8.5 million dollars per year, a couple of very important things happen. One, the network average PCI score jumps from your current 59 to a 64. So now rather than being below the national average, you are right up there at the upper edge, uh, of that, of that national average. And more importantly, um, is backlog. If you notice there, backlog has been reduced to 16.4%. We are so very close to that maximum recommended 15% mark. So that funding level, it will arrest the growth in backlog and it will begin to, to reduce the growth in backlog as well. Uh, so if we take a look at the pavement management program, we talked about the PCI, uh, I've shown you the budget models. As a result of all those model runs in the pavement management program, it also makes selections. It makes rehab selections using that, those, uh, those, uh, priority weight factors and the optimization factors that we mentioned. And that's this map here. So this map is at the 8.5 million dollar, uh, goal and target budget and shows you, uh, where all of those rehab selections are throughout the network. Um, on a, on a, on a, on another slide here, I'm going to zoom in a little bit. But, uh, basically all of these colors represent different rehab treatments that are being triggered in different years over the next. over the next five years. And again, if we were to acquire the $8.5 million budget, you would see a post-rehab PCI of 64 in as little as five years, and backlog would be reduced to that 16%. So let's compare the results a little bit. What you're looking at here, these are two maps that show the PCI score on a segment-by-segment basis in the city. The one on the left is where we are now, where we are today, and the one on the right is 2025, assuming that we acquired the $8.5 million goal budget. And it's hard to see, but on those two maps, you can start to see that there's less red and there's more green roads on the 2025 map. Green is good, red is bad, yellow's all the subtle levels in between. And if we zoom in a little bit on the same area, we can start to drastically see some of those differences. So in the middle there, you can see there's far more green than there is reds and oranges and yellows, same with the upper right-hand quadrant and lower left-hand quadrant of the map as well. And with that, I'd be happy to open it up to any questions about the city's pavement management program.
Thank you, Zach.
Yeah, thank you. Questions, comments from the council? Councilmember Rusi?
Thank you, Zach. That was a wonderful tutorial about the pavement management program, and it's also perfect timing. Thank you for stressing that the roads are a deteriorating asset and will need replacement and repairs by the city taxpayers forever. And it shows that Prescott, the city of Prescott, needs to start requiring the privatization of residential roads in our new annexations and that the money saved by not using taxpayer dollars to maintain residential roads, the new annexations, can be used to rehab the roads in our older traditional Prescott. 293 center miles of roads are what we have now. It's a $218 million total asset, and I think we need to keep our roads in as well-maintained condition as we can because that is actually a barometer as to how well-maintained and how well-run a community is by the condition of the roads. Thank you.
Other questions, comments from the council? Any public comment?
No, Mayor.
Oh, I missed, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. Craig, I wonder if we could get a printed copy of this presentation? It's a lot of information. Thank you. And our one cent sales tax for our streets and roads, how much does that supply us?
About 16 million.
Okay. So we put, so how does that equate to the 8.5 and the 16 million?
In this, this program, the 8.5 is all about pavement preservation.
Right.
That does not include full reconstruction projects like we just did some at McCormick Beach, such. So then that 16 million has to, it's got to cover normal operations and maintenance, our, you know, all of our streets, folks that are doing network every day, this pavement preservation program, as well as then those full reconstructs and other things that fall into that Streets Fund category.
Okay. And then I have to make a comment about councilmember Rusi's comment about making our new annexations all private streets. Private streets are expensive for individuals to maintain, and individuals that are on those private streets are also citizens. And so to say that our annexations going forward would be private, I think would be a lot on trying to make our homes affordable for people that live in the city of Prescott.
Councilwoman Good?
Thank you, Mayor. Craig, I know you and I have talked many times over the last several years along with Tim, trying to get this data loaded, all the measurements made, and then categorizing the priorities and being able to put together neighborhood projects that will upgrade our overall PCI, particularly those neighborhoods that have a proximity to our downtown core, and probably is going to change a little bit of our strategic plan as we know more and more economic development happens in the North Prescott area. So are we at the point now where all the data is loaded, we can have the priority maps generated, and then start planning and finishing these projects?
Yes. And each of the maps that were included in this presentation actually came out of our lucidity program.
Right.
So all that information is in there. So now we can go in there like with Zach's graph with all the different funding levels. We can put in that funding level and then run a model from the program. And then it will give us an output of streets, processes going to be used on them, or methods going to be used on them, and throughout the city. So then we can take and run those models, whether we look at it on a one year or if we look at it over five years. We can, we can put that funding in there for each of five years, and it will give us those models. It'll give us those streets and all the lists that will go with it.
And how will you manage that? Will you have like two different teams, one working on pavement restoration and other teams working on major reconstruction projects so that at least they're coordinated and not require overlap and trenching and retrenching and repairs and those kinds of things we see?
Every project that we do, we look at it then holistically in regards to how is the water system? How is the wastewater system? Are there drainage issues? So we look at it. And sometimes the pavement management program may come out and say to do a street, but we know that we've got a large water project coming up in two years. So then we would hold off and do something different along with the water project. So we have that coordination within the department on the projects.
So you're still going to need some institutional knowledge to kind of override the recommendations of Hal here, right?
That will be something that is needed forever when it comes to maintaining systems like this.
I appreciate that. It's long overdue. So thank you.
Councilwoman Sishka?
Thank you, Mayor. Craig, is there a set formula for how long it takes for a new street to start to be worked on?
There are definite timeframes put towards that. And Zach or Eric, could, would either you chime in on that, please?
Yes. So the timeframe, typically, the, if you remember, the, one of the first slides we looked at was a deterioration curve. And so the first five to eight years of the service life of that road, typically, there's very little to do. We may do things like rejuvenators or fog seals, things like that. And as that performance, that lifecycle curve dives off over time, then we start to do the, we start to see the projects that are triggered, like the chip seals or the cape seals or the overlays, mills and fills, things like that, to keep them in good health before they completely deteriorate. So we do have a timeline, and that's built into the system. And each type of road, a local road, a minor, or arterial collector, they have their own performance curves based on the traffic loads that they have. So those are programmed in and connected to each segment in the system.
Thank you. Are there specific impact fees which go specifically for repairing roads in new subdivisions?
No, impact fees are all associated with expansion projects or new streets. We, our impact fees currently are being associated with the crossing of Granite Creek in the vicinity of the Fippen, the widening in the Dells area. We have a traffic signal coordination project on Willow Creek Road that is one of the impact fees. So those are, that's the only place impact fees go. They don't go to general maintenance.
So basically, these people who move into new areas, they will be paying our road tax the one cent, but they won't be getting any benefit from the one cent, other than in other areas of Prescott?
Well, within, like Eric mentioned, we get in there three years or five years in on that new road, then we have to come and do a rejuvenator.
But I mean, if it's a private road.
Oh, yes. If it's a private road, no.
Person is paying the tax and not getting any benefit. That's just a question I had.
Yeah. They would get the benefit up to the gate or that magic line where it would switch from public to private.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions, comments? And there was no public comment, Sarah?
No, Mayor.
All right. Thanks again, Craig. Appreciate it. Very helpful. Let's move on to item three B, please.
Discussion regarding the city's allocation of CARES Act funding.
Mayor, I decided in light of Craig's presentation not to do anything other than roads, so we're done for the, I'm just teasing a little bit. I actually appreciate the opportunity to talk to you guys about something that I think is a positive and is exciting. And it's fortuitous timing because Mark just told me right before the meeting that $5,080,000 plus or minus was deposited in our account today.
Nice.
It's not speculative money. It's real money. I'm not going to belabor the points I've raised too much in the memorandum, but I wanted to reiterate that I really do view this as a one-time, once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to really leverage federal money passed through the state on transformative projects. And, you know, I kind of defined transformative projects in the memorandum, but just for the public, there really are endeavors that could provide a long-term and potentially a generational positive return on a one-time investment. And so in the interest of that, we really thought big. And we thought big in terms of an area that I would like to see us work on diligently, which is the diversification of our economic development opportunities. We all love the hospitality industry and the construction industry, but we need to have other options in this community for people to live and work, and not just for me, but for my children and my grandchildren. So before I get into the specific projects, I have heard a few things bandied about since we've come out with some ideas in the community, and I wanted to talk about some of those. The first one was that I've heard that there's a narrative out there that this money is only supposed to be spent on public safety needs. And I wanted to quote something from the governor's website, if you would indulge me. "Local governments may use their allocation to cover regular payroll costs of public safety personnel," this is a key part, "freeing up existing local budget capacity to be deployed elsewhere." So really, what I'm proposing is we take advantage of the ability to put our money elsewhere on projects that make Prescott stronger post-pandemic. The second thing I've heard a little bit about is that maybe we should do direct allocations to impacted businesses. So I did a little research on this. If you just take in bars, restaurants, salons, and gyms, we have over 500 businesses in those four areas. So we would all agree that the impacts of COVID transcend those four areas. What about hotels? What about retail outlets? But if you just take those 500 businesses and you took the $5 million and allocated it equitably across those, it ends up being a whopping 10 grand per business. So if you were really to go to the level of everybody impacted, the word councilman Good used with me an hour or two ago was you dilute the impact of this. Is that what you said? And it's the truth. We need to do a shot in the arm to everybody, and the best way to do that in my mind is to shine up our own assets and diversify our product. And with that, Tyler has an overview of the CARES Act funding recommendations from staff. And because I am the first to admit I am not an expert in every area of city government, I am going to defer to Tyler Goodman and Ann about the Granite Creek Corridor, and John Heiney about the idea of economic development and business travel advertising and marketing. And also, we appreciate John Haas from Emory Riddle Aeronautical University being here to talk a little bit about the Center for the Future. So without further ado, we'll get moving.
Thank you, Michael. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm going to start us off by talking about the Granite Creek Corridor. And you'll recall that I brought this to you, the master plan that is. We completed it in February, and it's really impressive. It gets very detailed, but without getting into too much detail, it's really split into two parts. There's improvements to the creek itself, the functionality, the health, the vegetation, kind of that ecosystem. And then the other half would be the trail, connections, signage, lighting, kind of the aesthetics, the beautification and access. And we anticipate, well, let me start with, the total project estimated cost is just over $1.7 million. We anticipate, as we go out for state grant funds, we're looking at two funding sources, one through ADEQ and one through the Land and Water Conservation Fund through state parks. And we're anticipating a 50-50 match. So if you break that down, the estimated city cost total is over $877,000, and we expect that to be done over about two fiscal years. So we're looking at $438,785 per year, and that's the cost for the plan. And I just wanted to show you as a reminder some of the renderings that were done for the beautification, pathway, retaining walls, vegetation, the trails, signage, and lighting. And there's a lot more to this, but this is maybe an idea of what it could look like. And it's a beautiful stretch, 1.2 miles, as you know, through the heart of downtown. Are there any questions on this one?
So Tyler, what was that final amount?
The final amount? Let me go back for you.
77 divided.
Divided by two.
Okay.
$438,785 per year. And if there's no questions, I'll hand it off to Ann, who will talk about wayfinding signs.
Mayor, Council, good afternoon. So going back to the Granite Creek Corridor project, if you remember, part of that project includes wayfinding signs. And over the years, I know we're all aware and we've all been part of discussions that there's a known benefit to one day being able to implement proper wayfinding signs in our downtown. And so because of the Granite Creek Corridor project would include these wayfinding signs, the thought was this would be a great opportunity to implement wayfindings properly in downtown. So basically, the estimate for this is $45,000, and what that includes is the study that would give us the proper implementation, the usage, and the placement, some signage, and then, of course, the template to be able to print signs as we move forward. So there's several benefits. I'm not, I won't read them all, but I am going to read two. And one of the biggest benefits is that it drives traffics to businesses. It increases their visibility, and it increases their brand recognition. It also is a management strategy for tourism and residence life. Besides the quality of life, it helps, you know, reduces traffic demands. It helps with parking, and it prevents the adverse effect from tourists on businesses and residents. So I have a couple of examples I'm going to show you. And as I show you these, just keep in mind that the firm, the design team, they would create our signage in the fit, the look and the feel of Prescott. And as far as placement goes, it could be, it could be on a pole, a post, a pillar. It could be in several ways. So that's all things that are taken into consideration. So again, like I said, if the Granite Creek Corridor is to come to be, and they are including wayfinding signs, the opportunity to do this now downtown would make it consistent and comprehensive. So that's my portion. If there's any questions? All right. Thank you.
All right. Next, we'll talk about the Center for the Future. I'll invite Dr. Haas to come up. And Dr. Haas, you could present either way. to come up. And Dr. Haas, you could present either way, either direction you'd like to go.
May I flip the slides?
Yes. And you can use that to forward them.
Great. Well, good afternoon, Mayor Mangarelli.
Good to see you.
Mayor Protem, or distinguished members of the council. It's great to be here today, and I wanted to speak to you about the Center for the Future, something you've heard before. Um, back in March of 2019, with Dr. Frank Ayers, we were here. Let me see if we can get this thing to go. Really, three main points is that we want to really retain our youth that are leaving today. You mentioned your children and your grandchildren. We'd like to have high-paying jobs, uh, and we'd like to diversify beyond what we have today. So, uh, every year, most of the graduates leave. This is an economic brain drain. They leave their talent, their degrees and their energy, and we don't get to benefit from it. Yet we spend money on their education and their time here. So as we look out, you already recognize this. This is goal number two of the strategy for 2020, to create jobs. And we've already begun by attracting a couple of companies, aviation. CP Technology is already building a building out by the airport in alignment with the master plan. So as we look ahead, I have to ask, who would have thought that a car company that does solar panels would be delivering astronauts to the space station? It was just a dream, but now it's a reality. These young people are dreaming big. They are really and truly rocket scientists coming from Embry-Riddle. And they would love nothing better than to land here. And we know that they are looking at Space 3.0. Because space has a lot of junk up there and a lot of it is old. And it's going to be refreshed in this decade. And they are the people that are going to do it. One of the people on our team, Scott Webster, was one of the founders of Orbital Science. They had a dream. They said, this space station, this, uh, spacecraft that we launched up, the shuttle, was pretty good, but it only could go lower Earth orbit. They said, we know how to get to higher Earth orbit. They didn't exactly know how, but they made the gamble. These young people are a gamble that Prescott can make a good investment in. So what is this center? It's more than just a building. It's to grow and diversify Yavapai's economy. It's to create careers, high-paying jobs, bring families here and keep them here rather than having them go down to Phoenix or the Bay Area or Austin, Texas. And it's more than just a building. It's services, it's the people, it's the innovation, it's bringing venture together, it's bringing funding together because it's a package. We've already made success. You've probably heard about the Cyber Warfare Range. And this May, we finally got two large and slow institutions to sign an agreement. And we, uh, delivered three racks of computers to Yavapai College where it's housed today. And we have students now working to set them up. We'll have our first workshops and trainings this fall. And we'll have the second annual, uh, Capture the Flag that we put on last year for only 24 high school students, because that was the limit of our size that we could do. This year, we can do a larger uh, project, and we can support it on these computers. And we'll actually make some displays so that people don't look at it and just see these blinking lights. They'll say, what is it doing? What's being computed? So we're excited because this vision began as a dream back in 2017. We got support from Embry-Riddle. We came here, we got support from the council. We've identified land out by the airport in, uh, in concert with the master plan. We've got a 501(c)(3). We've got Warfare Range started. And we're looking to you today, uh, to present and look for seed funding on, to create, uh, this and launch this in September of this year. So, John.
Just, I'm going to interject, um, just for your edification. I can't go into the details, but we have a generous landowner who is willing to donate the property for this project, which I think is an important side note. Sorry.
No, that's great, because I was, I was going to mention, uh, mention that, but you've already done it, so it'll just be a second time you'll hear it in just a minute. So this is not a new thing. This is not something that we have to try, we have to figure out, we have to innovate. No, what we have to do is execute. Because it's been done by large, small, and medium-sized cities all around the country. Because the rural brain drain is not just unique to Prescott. It's almost everywhere in the United States, and all the agencies realize we can't have everybody going to the coast. What happens if the coast slips into the ocean? So I wanted to show you an example of a small nearby city, uh, called Durango, Colorado. And SCAPE is the Southwest Colorado Accelerator Program for Entrepreneurs. They started in 2013, by the way, the same time that I came to Prescott to start the Cyber Intelligence and Security Program with zero students. Today, we have 160 students, and we have a college that's going great guns. We just, uh, had $350,000 given to us from the Department of Defense for scholarships and for innovation in our program. Durango has got about 20,000 people, the county is 54,000. Compare that to Prescott and Yavapai County. They have one little liberal arts college. We have Embry-Riddle, we have Yavapai College, we have NAU and others. They have 2 billion in GDP, we have 9 billion. They have turboprops going to DIA, DFW. We've got jets, and we're expanding. Uh, so both of us have a very similar vision, create high-tech companies, innovation, attraction, education, mentoring. They've created 122 new jobs in seven years. And we see in our plan 112 new organic jobs. These are ones that are innovation. They're homegrown. But we also see attracting companies, and I'll show you some of the names. So we see that there would be millions of dollars in taxable income, which would be the way that the city would be able to benefit from this investment. And we've already got four companies growing right now. So here's some of the people that are involved. Uh, this is my sixth startup, but my first educational startup here at, uh, Embry-Riddle. Uh, so I'm no, uh, person that hasn't done this. Uh, Scott Webster was one of the founders of Orbital Science. Uh, Tony has been working with a number of things. So we have the technology. We're fortunate to have the kind of leaders in this community that can help us make this a reality. Because success doesn't just happen. You have to drive it, you have to manage it, you have to create it. You have to have a network of influencers. So for instance, you have to be able to call up. We just got a letter from, uh, Andy Lombard at the Arizona Commerce Authority saying, yes, we support this. You've got to be able to call up Sandra Watson. You've got to be able to call up, uh, Dennis Gosar. His office is sending us a letter. Because we need to be able to influence, we need to find the funding, we need to get the venture people here, because that seed grows into a great tree. We need access to the finance, we need management discipline, and we need facilities and services. And luckily, people come here to retire, but they haven't given up their life. So SCORE, which is the retired executives, could be a great opportunity for executives and residents, people to help these young companies and help these attracted companies to stay here and grow here. So as we look out, we look at a, a land donation to start. We look at a foundational building with both public and private funding. And then we look for private investment to be able to operate the company, and then, of course, tenants and revenue that grow over time. If you take a look at the, um, financials and the types of companies we're talking to, you saw Catalyst, SimpleWAN, we spoke to yesterday, and I've been speaking to them. They're moving up from Glendale, Arizona, down by Phoenix. And they have taken advantage of COVID. They made network systems for small and mid-sized businesses, but guess what happened with COVID? They all went to their homes. But how many of us are sharing the network with our spouses and children? How secure is that? So they are pivoting, and now they have a product that goes into homes that provides you secure networking. And they see the students at Embry-Riddle and Yavapai College as their employees because they can't create their products fast enough. What a great problem to have. And so we're working with them to find some temporary space right away and then move them into the center as it becomes available. So we have other, uh, companies, of course, the Warfare Range, Epiuse, I'm meeting with tomorrow. That's a billion-dollar company headquartered in South Africa, and the CEO doesn't have a board of trustees. He can make the decision on the spot. So we'll be talking to him about that, uh, tomorrow morning. So it's exciting because as you look out at the growth, organic growth is slow because you get a few people, um, Catalyst, four people, then next year you get seven people, and then you have 11 people, and then you have 20 people. But slowly that grows to 122 people by 2027. But you can attract a company like CP Technology, like SimpleWAN, like GSIS, like Epiuse, and they can bring 40 people. They can bring 30 people. And that comes in chunks and can grow. For every job, high-tech you create, you create between two and four jobs in what's called the indirect job market. And so over time, you see that by 2026, you have 500 and some new jobs created in a diverse economy of high-tech, GSIS, G-SOCs, cyber, drones, blockchain, machine learning, all of these technologies that will be the investment of this decade. And we can be leaders in those areas because that's where we are innovating, that's where we're training our students. So these are some of the timelines that we see. We've already done a lot of work, but a lot of that work has been done, uh, so to speak, part-time, uh, with just the people that we can get for free. It's time now to turn that into, uh, a complete, uh, package. Over the next three months, it goes from right now on a piece of paper to ready for design and ready for build. If we had our way, we would be right after CP Technology building is just about done. We turn that around and speaking about roads where you keep your machinery in place, keep your people in place, and just start the next one. And it becomes a campus. So it starts with one building, then two, then three. University of North Dakota started in 1984. Today, their sixth building is being formed, and it was paid for entirely by philanthropic money and named. There's a small little place in West Lafayette, Indiana. Of course, it's right next to Purdue. They just announced a billion-dollar Discovery Park Phase Two. That's where we can be in seven years, in 10 years. So it's an exciting time, and, uh, we have these, uh, slides available for you. Uh, we've provided them to Tyler, so you can print them. What we're looking at for the city is returns in greater than $50 million in revenue by 2027. Clean technologies, diversified, and business services around it. So what we're asking, we're asking for, make a seed investment. Do something transformational with this CARES money. Do something that will change it not for a year, not for two years, but for a decade, for two decades. And start today, and we'll be up there on the board when other cities and towns around the United States are saying, why can't we be like Prescott? So, thank you for your support. We want to create high-quality, high-tech jobs that pay people to stay people. We want to have younger families coming here and staying here. We want to bring revenue to the city and have that be sustainable year over year. And we want to be aligned with the North Prescott Program around the airport and take advantage of it because that's where we're building infrastructure. That's where we're building streets and keep our historic and cherished cultural downtown as the tourist attraction that it is. Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you, Dr. Haas. It's, uh, good to have you here and, and, uh, great presentation. Really appreciate, uh, your, your, uh, depiction of the Center for the Future. I'm, I'm very excited. Uh, Councilmember Rusin?
Dr. Haas, that was definitely enlightening and very exciting. Uh, you mentioned seed money. Uh, do you have some, a ballpark number?
For the seed money, uh, the seed money is 3.7 million is what we're proposing.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, comments from the council?
Sure.
Mayor Protem?
Yes, thank you. You know, I've said it several times, I've seen several times that we've had some silver lining with the COVID. And, uh, this is definitely a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for the city. And I told Michael Lamar yesterday, and I meant it, I remember when he interviewed for his job and, and some of his ideas, and, and I said, yesterday, I said, this is why we hired you. You know, thinking outside of the box, looking at the opportunity that we have, and, and really looking at something that will give to generations. I love the, the way that you brought the Durango group in. I've met the young folks with Catalyst, and, and they are truly amazing. Uh, this can happen here. And it will give back forever. And will not just be used and gone away. I mean, this is something that would help our community for a very long time. And I love the Granite Creek Corridor, the wayfinding signs, sending people to our businesses when they're walking along. There are just so many positive sides to this. And, Dr. Haas, your, the partnership with Embry-Riddle is just priceless. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilman Good?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a concept and a strategy that I have been advocating for, for quite a number of years. We have been kind of restricted in our ability to, uh, provide, uh, other than some, structural support, um, in the past. And I know I've been involved in a lot of the different, um, uh, economic, um, meetings where we've had uh, high-tech CEOs and managers visit the area, uh, even just from, uh, the Phoenix, uh, area and, and time and time again, I would hear them comment like, boy, I had no idea you had these kind of capabilities up here. Why didn't I know about this before? So I think, uh, we've spent a lot of time creating, uh, an understanding that this is a, um, unique place to be able to, um, connect with Embry-Riddle and the technology, uh, the advancement in global security, internet security. I know when, um, I spoke with you three or four years ago, they were saying there were about 300,000, uh, jobs, six-figure jobs for uh, graduates of some of these programs throughout the country. And I know we have a concentration of them here due to the innovation and development of your, uh, college in that area. And now that number is 500,000. So the need for these, um, highly skilled and educated, uh, graduates, uh, is clearly a growing demand. And our ability to put something together that we can capture them, capture their ideas, and, uh, be able to, uh, work not only for them, but be able to collaborate, uh, with, with a program like this that kind of, uh, develops and feeds on itself to, uh, expand. And I know you're, sometimes when you say, yeah, we're, we're doubling every year, but we start off with four and then we go with eight. But there was an old saying that the Emperor of China awarded a peasant, anything he wanted, because he had saved a member of the royal family, and he said, just give me, uh, one grain of rice on each square of a chessboard and, uh, double it on every, every other, uh, square. So the emperor said, well, that'd be no problem. Well, by the time he got halfway through the chessboard, that, that peasant owned all the rice production and rice for the next millennium, I think. So, um, it, it does start small sometimes, but when you have a collaboration of, um, the young kids like, um, Catalyst working with the CP Technology, um, types of companies, then it really does, I think, accelerate that expectation. And it fits in so well with our, uh, new, uh, airport terminal, the services that we have. Um, I still talk to executives that say, I don't see any time in the future when we don't need to have a face-to-face with our future customers so we can sign a contract because we know we can trust them. So being able to have that connection and, um, talking with some of the executives at CP Technology, knowing that they can, uh, quickly fly into Prescott or fly out of Prescott, or have customers fly into Prescott, um, and having all this happen at the same time, I think is an opportunity for us that we really need to take advantage of. So, um, let's keep in mind that the CARES Act actually, um, mentions coronavirus aid relief and econ- economic security, and that's where this would definitely fit in. So I would support a substantial allocation of some of these CARES funds to this project, knowing that it would be an investment that will have a protected return on investment for the city so that the taxpayers know that it's something that will help everyone, not a particular one of the 500 bars or restaurants or, or nail salons, because that is something that clearly, I think, everybody who realizes that we have a primary retirement community here that's focused on a lot of the baby boomers that are retiring, that we need to have a generation of people, young people, that have an investment in this location and will be able to support in the long term and the long run, a, a future that's going to be beneficial for everyone. So I think it's just a matter of kind of working out some of the details on this. But I'm excited to see that there's an opportunity that we can actually do something substantial here. So I would support that. Thank you.
Councilman Good?
Councilman Siski? Thank you. Dr. Haas, thanks for coming. And this may be in Jim's wheelhouse a little more than yours, but I'm, I, I want you to address the fact that when these companies want to look at this area, they need turnkey office space, and it really isn't here.
Correct.
And they need to be together, like Silicon Valley.
Right.
So how is this going to, how, how has this affected us in the past with not having the opportunity, and then what does it look like in the future?
Yeah, in the past, people come here, they're interested because they say, what a great place to live, my people would love to be here, I wish I could move. So can you show me the sites that I have to choose from? And we have a dearth of sites that are available for people to, to consider. And so this is why with the company SimpleWAN, they come to look here and they say, what's available? And we go, well, here's a place that you could use, but maybe you'll have to split your people up into two buildings. And maybe they won't be in the most ideal location. By having a center, a place where we can start to seed this growth, then people can have a vision, and they can realize, oh, I can start here and I see the opportunity for expansion. Because when you look at these innovation centers around the country, they start with a seed, but they grow, and we have the space. That's one lucky thing that we have, is we have land, we have fiber, which is going to be a critical piece to us, and we have the infrastructure capable to be able to support continued expansion for this. And when companies can say, oh, I can start to get going now, and I see how I can grow with the community. It makes all the difference.
And how long would it take to get this thing out of the ground?
Well, our plan says next fall, late next fall, we could have a building. If I look at the rate at which they're building the CP-
In the fall, a year from now, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
So if I look at the rate that they're building the CP Technology building, and we've seen, I think they also built Vinyl Vision, and we see the, the speed with which, with the right resources and with the right idea, you know, no, don't go in there and say, can we, can we move the bathroom over? No. We have an idea and we execute on it. We can, we can put it up relatively rapidly.
And do we have companies that will wait that long?
We do, and we have companies that are willing to have temporary space. SimpleWAN, we have found some temporary space here in the community. In fact, it's right around the corner, an, an old energy company-
Yes.
-that hasn't been using a space. And so we would see that as a temporary intermediate place for several of the companies.
Thank you.
Just to dovetail on John's presentation, and I won't belabor it, my expectation, and I think John and Jim are on the same page, is we can't be, if we build it, they will come with this. We need to have some threshold of occupancy guarantee, and these gentlemen are comfortable with that, you know, would be, the idea would be, maybe you set it at three-quarters full or 75% that you know day one that three-quarters of what you build out would be occupied. The other thing is, the 3.7 million, worst-case scenario, can build about a 28,000 to 29,000 square, square-foot facility. Would you guys feel like, right now, meets our demands and still has a little room for growth? Is that accurate with both your concern?
Yeah, I think, Michael, I think what we could do is a couple things. Obviously-
Hey, Jim, why don't you come up to the mic? We, we do have people listening online, so make, make sure we get onto the mic.
Sing with me here?
That's fine.
I, I think there's a, I think there's a couple of things that we can do, because obviously we want to protect the city, but we want to make sure that we get the, the growth and the jobs that we want. So there's two components to this, I think. One is if we can find interim space right now, almost, we'll start to put companies in there that then could move to the center. That would be one, one component. Second component, component is on this building, say it was 25,000 to 30,000 square feet, we would maybe, depending if it was three stories, 10, 10, and 10, or if it was 15 and 15, we would go out and try and find 75% occupancy on that first 15,000 or 10,000, and then kind of build, so we build the whole shell, but we would have, build the suit after that. So we wouldn't build out the entire 25,000 or 30,000. So that way, from a cost standpoint, it would keep it down and make sure that we've, we've gotten started, and then you're just into leasehold improvements for those tenants that want to come in. So we're, we want to be, do this right and be cautious on it.
And the other thing, just for the public at large, the other thing that the commitment we need is that this is a capital contribution, and we are not involved in running this place? Because this can't be an ongoing commitment by the city, and these guys understand that, too.
It would, it would be like John's friends called Plug and Play, that's, that's up in Silicon Valley. These guys get very involved, they would take over the building and actually lease it out and be in charge of that, was one side of that. But I think for right now, what we'd like to do is make sure we have the tenants lined up, and, you know, we can give you, you know, we can show you leases and do LOIs based on, obviously, on the, on doing that. One last component, and I think this was really important, and I think you guys have heard me pitch this so much, and that was the exit of our young people and the exit of our students, whether it be high school, college, graduates, citizens. And before the pandemic, we had a study done, and one in four workers, not retirees, but one in four workers was near the poverty level. 36% of our workers are traveling over 50 miles for work. So when we talk about high-tech jobs, in some cases, that scares people, but here's the beauty of it, and John hit on it, two to four indirect jobs are related to that. In some areas, it's seven. So if we take a look at that, and we look at a high-paying job by the, according to the state of Arizona, it's $60,000. We're talking about between $60,000 and $150,000 in annual salary. So if you take that, and you can see 122 people or 500 people making that kind of money has, has a tremendous impact. The other thing I just want to do is give this guy, Dr. Haas, some credit. I tell him to tot his horn, and he doesn't do it. The Cyber Warfare Range, this guy got together with Yavapai College and worked that to create the Cyber Warfare Range, which will be in Yavapai College, Prescott Campus, and in the community room, in the library above. And John went down and got all the equipment for this, put it together, got the leases signed, and has just worked so hard on this for our young people. Why is this important? This is the start, this is the start of the young people from high schools being involved in cyber, which then goes to, they can take classes at Yavapai College, and John has a path that they can go from Yavapai College, all credits would, would go towards going to Embry-Riddle. So we create a path for education, and we've created a path for jobs through the Cyber Warfare Range. I cannot thank him enough of how powerful this is for our community, and it's almost ready to go. If it wasn't COVID, we'd probably be, be doing it now, but thank you, John.
Other questions, comments from the council?
Well, thanks so much, Dr. Haas. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much for your day.
Mayor, John Heinie is going to come in and talk a little bit about business tourism and economic development, marketing and advertising. And I just want everybody to notice that everything sort of dovetails behind the other, that we have never had the kind of product to show people, in my mind, from an economic development perspective, we have now. We have a new terminal, we have CP Tech, we have the Center for the Future coming online, theoretically. You have something that you could package to go somewhere else and say, hey, look at what we're doing. I don't know that that's ever existed before, and I think, once you have those tangible assets, packaging them and going out makes sense. So that's the table setting I'm doing on this.
Nice segue. Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Mayor and Council. Thanks for this opportunity to speak today. This is an exciting day. There's a lot of great ideas here. Michael already said exactly what I was going to lead with, is really, we just heard a great story about the potential for the center, and we have a lot of great stories. And, and what I'm going to propose here is something that will help us tell the stories in a professional and well-rounded way. So what we're proposing here is a marketing and advertising campaign, and really, I'll say, it's also a sales effort as well that will follow on from that, because you want to be able to close the deal after you get the information out there. So we're estimating $60,000 for this. This would be for development of an advertising and marketing strategy and campaign, some production and placement as well, so some of the advertising purchases that are made, and then as well as some sales and business travel expenses. Our target markets, it's, I think, very easy right now to look at the Valley and Tucson. These are some of our tourism markets as well, but we'll talk about why those things are connected. California, of course, Pacific Northwest, and central Texas, which is, I think we're looking at the Dallas area in particular. Some of the objectives, we would retain a company that would create a robust marketing and advertising campaign. We would ensure the development of a broader economic development growth to support the Center for the Future, as we just discussed, to tell those great stories, create brand awareness for Prescott and for the center, and highlight different perspective on Prescott for potential business and investors. We'll communicate our unique qualities. We all know, sitting here, what Prescott has to offer to businesses from a business environment and also a lifestyle standpoint, but we need to tell the world about that. We need to tell these markets and these folks what we have to offer. Highlight companies that have invested in Prescott, as we talked about, CP Technologies is an amazing story. So, and aviation, as well as our awesome airport and the development that's going on there. So this is just a chance to tell these stories in a professional and well-rounded way. What are the benefits? What could come from this? I like this because I, I get to oversee tourism and economic development, and there really is a case to be made that they go hand in hand. And we're seeing that in cities and destinations around the country and around the world, how they're working together. So some of the benefits of weekday tourism business, so if we are able to invite some of these businesses here for conferences, so excited about the Hilton Garden coming on and their conference capabilities, if we invite those folks here for the week, that fills a need for us on the tourism side, because we're very busy on the weekends, we know that, but it's those weekdays. We talk about shoulder season, well, the weekdays are kind of the shoulder part of our week that we need to fill in, so this will bring that, bring that to us. Inviting decision-makers to Prescott, and Councilman Good referenced some of the great events that we brought here, where we've had decision-makers up here already. We can do more of that, and Jim's done a great job of promoting that and bringing that here, so we can do more of that. Showing that Prescott is competitive, I've talked to many companies in the last few months especially, that are seeking a different environment to do business in, especially in light of everything going on. So definitely COVID-19 is accelerating this trend. I think it will be to our benefit. These are some examples. I mentioned that other towns are doing this, most locally. Flagstaff has done a great job with their Visit, Discover, Grow program. You'll see up there, it's kind of hard to see, but there's two logos up there. One is from their Economic Development Office, and one is from the tourism side, because this was truly a joint effort between those two entities. They did exactly what we're proposing here. They brought in an agency to brainstorm ideas and ways and messaging to tell the Flagstaff story. This actually won an award with the Association for Economic Development. This is a strategy that works. There's some other examples as well on here, and the one in the lower right is actually our current webpage. And that's important because we're looking to enhance the assets that we have. We're not going to throw everything out. This campaign will enhance what we're already doing. So some points to consider with this, as we, as I talked about, tourism has proven to lead to economic development opportunities. It just makes sense that people visit here, fall in love with the place, would like to either move here and/or possibly move their business here. It's a great opportunity to create success as we emerge from the current economic conditions. Ann and I have been really immersed, Ann especially has been immersed in the travel industry right now, and it, you know, it's all about looking at the future because right now, there's not much happening. So there's a lot of future thought about travel and tourism on the leisure side and on the business side. So we're in a transformative time in tourism right now, so I think this is actually an excellent time to look for something like this that kind of brings these benefits together for economic development and tourism. Great time to rethink our destination marketing. The campaign would continue to capture the leisure travel market, of course, that is important to us, that is a part of our economy, but would enhance that business travel and the lead, the follow-on economic development. So that's everything I have for this presentation. Any questions or comments?
Questions, comments from the council? Councilman Good?
Thank you, Mayor. Having spent a career in primarily sales management, I know how tough it is sometimes when you're trying to convince somebody to make a commitment to your product or your company, when all you can say is, just imagine.
Yes.
And we've kind of been in that category here for a couple of years. So now that we have the terminal topping-out ceremony and a true visual example of our expanding capabilities when it comes to air service, and we have the expanding development of kind of a technology park that's starting to be created there at CP Technologies, and all the reconnected directions with Embry-Riddle. I know when I was out there at the groundbreaking with CP Technologies, two of the managers from the Arizona Commerce Authority elected to go over and take a tour of the CP Tech Labs and demonstration areas over there for Yavapai College, and they were all just almost aghast at the amazing amount of current technical capability that young people can be trained in and be able to work directly with some of the programs that, for example, CP Technologies is going to be working on unmanned aerial development vehicles, if you will. And it's just so well-coordinated that we now can show visual examples of how this is developing. And I know, and when we were developing new innovative products, a lot of people wanted to see what it was doing, and you have these reluctant first adopters who are just kind of, well, maybe I'll take a chance. And then when they come in and everybody else says, well, who else is doing it? And then they say, well, wow, that sounds great, maybe I should get in line. And then the third phase are the ones, I want to get in now, and we can say, well, you'll have to get in line because there's a lot of people ahead of you. So I think now is the time to kind of put these visual and real examples of what we're putting together so that those companies can, can say, now's the time for, for Prescott and, and technology. Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
So just to give you an example, and we've been working on this when we talk about the business tourism, and one of the things that we worked on with the Arizona Commerce Authority, it's called the Innovation Challenge. So if you look at the Governor's Innovation Challenge that happens down the valley, it's hundreds of millions of dollars that's been going on for about 20 years. I've been a panelist and a judge on it. When we got Andy Lombard, who's the EVP of Innovation and Venture Development and reports directly to Sandra up here to go to Embry-Riddle, my point was, I asked, I said, Andy, why can't we have an event up here? Period. Took him over to Embry-Riddle, looked at the cyber thing, he says, Jim, we need to have an event up here. I said, thank you, Andy. And so what we're in the process of doing, the COVID slowed us down a little bit, but we will have an Innovation Challenge up here in Prescott for Northern Arizona. There'll be prize money roughly around $200,000, and we had Tim Crown, and for those of you who don't know who Tim is, Tim was the founder of Insight Technology Company in, in, down in the valley. It's now about $16 billion, and he started- It's now about $16 billion, and he started his own private venture fund. He's the guy that pretty much invests in everything that comes out of Sky Song. I had Tim up here, he goes to Embry-Riddle, he goes, "Gee, I didn't know this was here," and goes, "I'll tell you what I'll do. Whatever the ACA does, I'll match those funds." So my point is with John, what he's saying is that will be one of our first kickoffs. We're hoping to have 50 companies participate in that Innovation Challenge. They have to stay someplace, right? And so what we want to do is take that as our foundation and then expand that out where maybe it goes to 100 companies and becomes an international tech conference.
To dovetail on what Jim said, I hope you can see how these synergies all work together because long-term, if that event was happening a year from now, we would have the Hilton Garden Inn and the Sam Hill Hardware, and you could demonstrate to these companies not just what you're doing at the airport, but if you're doing the Granite Creek Corridor revitalization, how much effort you're putting into quality of life downtown and economic development and quality of life in Prescott North. It just shows this community has its act together. I hope you understand that and what I'm trying to accomplish with this.
Yeah, and just one example, the Simple Win that John was talking about, that company down in the valley won in 2017 the Governor's Innovation Challenge. I met with him yesterday afternoon, he goes, "Jim, give me space. I want to be here now." So it's kind of exciting to watch that now. He goes, "I'll do anything I can to help with the center, and I'll help you bring companies up here." Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Anything else, questions for John? Thank you, John.
Great, thank you.
And I'm going to cover these last two things just kind of quickly. As I was just talking about, I really think we have two epicenters. One is a development epicenter out by the airport, and the other is a redevelopment epicenter, starting at what we're doing on the Granite Creek Corridor and building out. Let me talk a little bit about Prescott North first, and there's a lot for everybody on this. We realize now, more than ever, that the airport and the surrounding industrial properties are really where the career and job creations are going to be in this community. And this is a map of what I envision of Prescott North. And you know, when you start looking at this, this is a really big area, but you're really only looking at a handful of landowners. And what I would like to see us do with a third party is get these landowners at the table so we make collaborative, positive decisions about how this area grows to making it a self-sustaining city within a city. One of the scariest things for people that live here is they worry about all the negative impacts of growth and development, i.e. traffic, waiting longer time at the restaurant. If we get the stakeholders around the airport, plus the city, around the table to talk about how this could be its own self-sustaining city within a city, a lot of those negative impacts become secondary or negligible because people could live and work and play right here. But I think we need to have a game plan about how this is going to grow for the next 20 to 30 years. Because 30 years from now, there will be tens of thousands of residents here, but the more they can live and work and play in that circle, the better off we're all going to be. So I would like to have the ability to demonstrate to the public that we're thinking about what this growth is going to look like, and it's not just going to happen on top of us because we've all seen examples of what on top of us growth looks like. You don't have to look far and wide to see what it looks like. But if we can demonstrate to the people that live here that we're going to plan this right and do this right, then I think some of that negativity will go away. And simultaneously, we're protecting our best asset. You know, and I was thinking about economic development opportunities. Imagine, if you will, you get this thing off the ground, and with our marketing and going back to how all these things play off each other, I could go to a business and say, "You know what? We're planning a large segment of the growth of our community around you and around your needs because your needs are our needs." That really would carry a lot in my mind with a CEO of a company. That's my vision with this. And it goes all the way down to Riddle's campus, it includes Dr. Ascaris, but this is not, and I don't want this to be a document that you put on a shelf. If we generate this, this seems to be a working document that all of us have in front of us for almost every decision we're making about the land usage in that area. So it's a working document, and I didn't have a great name for it, but it's an area plan, but it's more than a plan. It's a vision of how you're going to grow what's basically a city within a city. Does that make any sense, or do you guys understand where I'm coming from?
Yeah, absolutely. I think it's a great idea. You know, especially, Michael, when you think about traffic, which is very concerning for a lot of our citizens, this would be a great vehicle, if you will, to plan this area so that we don't have traffic issues between here and there and in that area itself. But that's just one benefit of many.
Yep. It's utility placement, it's protection of economic development land, it's protection of the airport from residential, which we're already dealing with. It's, I wish we'd have done this three years ago, but this needs to be done yesterday. Because every day you wait, the more's happen out there that's just ad hoc and doesn't always make sense for the city.
Councilman Sishka.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I don't mean this to be a love fest, but I have to admit that the city within a city is something that is absolutely needed here. I think that people's biggest fear is the growth, the unbridled growth. And I think that one of the things that we need to do is to ensure that when we do plan, that we plan for those folks to live and play and shop in that area. So it isn't putting more people on Willow Creek Road or on Gurley or on Miller Valley. And I think we can do it. You know, but it's something that people have a hard time getting their mind around because they go, "Well, what do you mean, a city within a city? You mean we're going to have a totally different city out there?" No, it's going to be part of Prescott. But it's also going to be self-contained. And that's been that way. That was the plan for Deepwell, and it's the plan for AED, is to keep people out in that area and having them enjoy what Prescott is. And it's just an awesome plan, and I hope that we get right on it.
Thank you, Councilman.
The Honorable Councilman Blair.
It's never a love fest for me to come to these meetings, I'll tell you. I guess what I'd like to say is I appreciate the fact of the vision. I do. And I go along with Billy when we were hiring Michael, and his vision is what got him hired. But I don't want to leave our wagon of public safety people, people that work in this community. Economic development is part of having people come here feeling safe, feeling community, roads, streets, water, sewer. We have got to not lose focus on the very core principles of this community. And I brought it up until I'm sick and tired of bringing it up about employee raises, about merit increases, about quality of life of people that work in this community. Talk about economic security, let's make sure the people that love this community and protect us and work in the sewer plants and the garbage trucks feel like they belong here. We're talking about all the glory and glitter and stuff here, which I really appreciate. But also, we got cops that need body cameras. We have things to do that are grassroots reasons why people come here. I appreciate John Heine's conversation about tourism. Prescott's always been a tourism mecca, ever since I was in the bread business. We would look forward to summer coming and all the people burning up in Phoenix coming here to drop their dollars and leaving. That's never going to change, no matter how much money we spend out of this bucket of money. I don't care what Flagstaff's done. Prescott can barely hold its own if we don't have a pandemic. We're out of hotel spaces every summer. We love these people to come and leave, but also we need to make sure these people that come to want to have quality of life recreational experiences, whatever the case may be, feel like they're safe within this community. And I just want everybody sitting here on this dais to say, "We appreciate our employees, and we need to make sure that they're number one on our list." I think we keep forgetting that. So I'm here, I hope everybody's listening out there, and the employees know that I care about them because we're going to have to add more. North Prescott, we got to add more cops, we got to add more firemen, we got to add more trash trucks, we got to add the services or people don't want to come here. Jim Robb can push all the economic development he wants to push, but if we don't have the essential services to provide those great opportunities for this community, we're no different than anybody else in Arizona. So I just don't want to lose track of that. And by the way, the end of Sixth Street and Pleasant Street, my cousin's own Fortner Gifford Aerospace, that's a big building sitting there empty. If you need a place to put people temporarily, that's a big spot. So, but I don't want to keep going on, but you know what? I've been sitting here waiting for an airport for a long time. One of the big achievements. So it's taken a while to get here, let's just not forget that we can't have everything today, but let's protect what we do have today.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, Mr. Lamar was definitely correct when he said this gift from the American taxpayers is a once-in-a-lifetime, and I just would like to have a caveat that we have to be careful and remember that we are having COVID epidemic and maybe kind of save this money for a couple of months more to just see how things are going to play out, but in the meantime, continue to make plans for it. And it's a little over 5 million, and if you do the math between the, these were excellent presentations, by the way, between the Center for Excellence, 3.7 million, and then the Granite Creek Corridor, we're already at 5.4 million, and then you add in all the other things. So we're already looking at more than what we've been allocated. But I definitely would support projects that I call legacy building projects that will, can be enjoyed and will provide benefits in perpetuity and be enjoyed by and benefit young and old residents. And that's why I completely support the completion of the Granite Creek renovation project. I think that's a very important infrastructure project, and it would also benefit the businesses who have invested in that area, like the hotel, Prescott College, and other places. Also, I would like to see if, you know, if we do have the extra money, maybe expand to the Lazy G, all the way down to the Lazy G restaurant, and I think that would be a great place to end your walk. As you know, we, earlier this year, we went to the state and made a push with Noel Campbell for the formation of a regional park, and we were getting, I think, very close to that being, coming to fruition, but then the COVID crisis dashed those hopes. And now miraculously, we have another bucket of cash that maybe we can bring that dream to a reality. And as you know, outdoor activities, especially now with this COVID crisis, COVID's going to be with us for a long time, outdoor space and activities have become the forefront of keeping us safe. And I just would like to make a recommendation that we think about using some of this money for open space and completion of a regional park that will dovetail perfectly with our other open space and parks and trails. So thank you very much.
Tyler, would you like to talk to Councilmember Rusing about leveraging the state money associated with the Granite Creek Corridor revitalization?
Yes, the total project cost would be 1.7 million. However, we're only going to proceed with the grant monies from the state, and we're expecting a 50-50 match to fall on us, so it'd be $877,000.
So the project cost is cut in half at full implementation?
Yes.
Okay, and I don't want to spend a lot of time on it, but along with what I was trying to accomplish for Prescott North, with all the investment we're talking around Granite Creek Corridor, I think a planning session held by a third party to look at the new APS site that's actually under the control of Prescott College, but their idea of having a partnership with us, with the splash pad and the playground and the new hotel, and if we do the Granite Creek Corridor project, we should engage, as Councilmember Rusing mentioned, the business owners that rear yard faces Granite Creek Corridor to find ways to get them engaged and invest in their backyard. And with both of these, I also think there are traffic impacts, as Councilman Good and I have talked about, both pedestrian traffic impacts, about how you get people around, and vehicular traffic impacts that would be looked at under the proposal I'm putting in front of you. And I get a lot of the concerns you guys have, and I don't ever want to be viewed as a manager who hasn't looked internally at his workforce, because I have. And I get that maybe we're asking our workforce to wait a little longer in terms of merit raises. It's because I believe, again, back to the first thing I said, and I'll wrap it up with this, this is a one-time gift, and you have to seriously consider doing things that are going to positively impact this community for years to come. And every one of these projects, in my mind, does that. That's all I got.
Michael, just for clarity, can you do the math for us again, like with all of these projects, with the clarity that you gave on the Granite Creek revitalization? What's the number?
Everything you've seen here can be done for the $5 million, $80,000.
$85,000.
Right, so you've not over-allocated here?
Absolutely not. Everything is accomplished within the $5 million, a $5 million, $80,000 budget.
Okay. Mayor Protem?
Yes, thank you. Tyler, really great job with the visuals, and I love the stairway to the top and appreciate all of that. These are not, all of a sudden, we get this money and say, "What can we do with this money?" These are projects that we have been planning and working on for years, and it gives us an opportunity to fast-track some of these things and be really intentional about what we're doing. I want to assure you, Councilman Blair, our employees come to the top. I mean, they are, I think every one of us, we cherish our employees, and we will get there with those raises. I think it's just a matter of what Michael said about the timing of it. So I want to assure all of our employees, you know, I think this is also for them. I just, I think it's a great thing that we can make our city even better, and they're even prouder of being with our city. I think, Michael, that you're also hoping to bring in the Arizona Land Trust?
John was just whispering that to me. You know, they have felt a little bit like, in terms of Prescott North's growth, that the organic growth up there has been dictated by the surrounding developers and hasn't involved them at the table. And one of the things that I'm already committed to, in fact, I started to draft a letter for the mayor's signature, is when you approve this, and I've already had the conversation with them, they need to be at the table. They checkerboard all the way to Chino, A. B, having them at the table is really all they want, to release some of the projects we need released. Joe's nodding his head. So yes, they are going to be at the table. So that's another side benefit that I didn't mention, so thank you.
Yeah, that's great. You know, there's that old saying, you know, failing to plan is a plan to fail. And I think we're, I just think we're right, right where we need to be right now, and I'm very excited about it. So I want to thank you, I want to thank Tyler and John and Annie and Jim Robb and Tony Haber and Hamer, and certainly Dr. Haas. So what a great afternoon and what a silver lining. So thank you.
Councilman Sishka.
Thank you, Mayor. I think we need to change the parameters with which we base our sales tax on. You know, we've for so long relied on tourism, and what's the first thing that goes when we run into a situation like this? It's tourism. And so I think that by doing this, I think that by doing this situation and investing in our future, we're going to make sure that we're not going to run into a problem with, "Oh, my gosh, we may not have enough money to give our public servants..." oh, my gosh, we may not have enough money to give our public servants an increase. That's what this whole thing is for, is to really shore up our sales tax base. And so, you know, I am totally in favor of what we're proposing this afternoon. And I'm totally in favor of what you've proposed there, Blair, because I think that we all care about our employees. But it's what came first, the chicken or the egg?
Yeah. And again, thank you for saying that. But to me, the egg's out there protecting our community. And we sit here and we talk about how golden it is, and Billy, you're right, there's a silver lining behind all this money, and we're going to do things for the future of everybody. But again, for me to sit here and look at why the money's sent here, and I agree with Michael, but part of it's for public safety and those types of things, to still not come out and say, we're going to release their raises because we froze them July 1st, let's put those employees on top and know that we're moving ahead with the rest of these things. To me, no offense, Michael, to me, we throw these employees backwards, backwards, backwards every time we have a meeting. What are we waiting on? I mean, what are we waiting on? Pay compensation study, raises for our cops, these are people that worked through COVID. These are people that get spit upon. These are people that don't sleep at night. These are people that are making your sewers flow. But yet, I keep hearing they'll get theirs in due time. Why, I think their due time's up. Because we just put off their raises until when? When we decide to. And who's going to decide that? I guess collectively, we will. But I think they should be on the top, along with all these other projects, and not on the bottom. Sorry, I feel that way, but I just do.
So are you just talking about public safety, or are you talking about all city employees?
I'm talking about all city employees and pay compensation study that we have talked about to make sure, in the years I've been on this council, we've lost many employees because we haven't kept up with other communities. I'm just saying, I want our, I want our employees to hear out there that by God, your pay raises are going to be in your checkbook and not maybe someday we'll think about it.
Well, and I don't want it to be an afterthought, because we actually did have, the other things you've discussed from council, here's the list of what I'm aware of, and from staff, the police department body cams, which, by the way, I think needs to be done. It's a matter of do you use this money or do you use another pot of money? In this day and age, we need to protect our law enforcement officers and protect the public by having these cameras. And you're going to reach a point in the not-so-distant future where you better forget getting state and federal aid unless you camery up your cops. So that just needs to get done, and frankly, I think it could be done in general budget with contingency money.
Right. Yeah, I agree.
Anyway, I'm sorry to keep dragging it on, but you know, really, when you look at that number, it's such a minor number to everything we're talking about. And again, with the environment in the United States towards public safety people and the cops and how they're being treated, I want to tell every one of ours out here, thank you for what you do, because that's what makes Prescott the safe place to be. So, thank you.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. While we're on the topic of gifts from the taxpayers, I would like to request that we maybe have a program where we let the public know that an important part of estate and tax planning is donations, and you can make a tax deductible donation of assets to the city. And if there's any projects out there that you feel that are important, you can certainly help us bring them to fruition and support them with your tax planning, with your attorneys.
Well, and very quickly, because I know we're rushing, for all of you guys, these are the things I've heard a little bit, and I know that some of you maybe tweaked your thoughts on it. The first was Councilman Good had brought forward paying the original ARC. The difference between the original ARC and the current ARC is about 3.3 million. To reinstitute the raises across the board, I didn't break it down, public safety versus not public safety, it's for everybody, it's about just under 600,000. Councilmember Rusing had mentioned putting this money away for a rainy day in some capacity, so we just put the whole amount away. And then also, Councilmember Rusing had mentioned the idea of maybe doing the Granite Creek Corridor project and then putting the rest for open space, which would be that number.
Four million?
Yeah, it's 4.1. And we talked a little bit about the impacted businesses. I don't think any of you are at a point now where you think that that's really viable. Is that, am I putting words in anybody's mouth, or is that sort of where we are at?
Not viable in my world.
All right.
That's never enough.
Councilman Shaw.
Thanks, Mayor. You know, as a younger person, I really appreciate the last couple of years, this shift from Prescott being focused on as a retirement town to a place where people can stay and work. When I was growing up, and more specifically in high school, there was this expectation that most people leave and go to college and don't come back, and Prescott just becomes the place where you grew up, and you come back to visit mom and dad. So I think it's really cool that this council is focusing on opportunities for young people in this community. And I think it's an interesting predicament that we're in of what to do with this money, because there are a lot of ideas. And, you know, we've talked a lot about, you know, employee raises. Is there a way to use the CARES money for employee raises now, and then that money that is in contingency be used for the projects we're looking at?
Councilmember, Councilwoman Shaw, yes. It's just a shifting of the pots. I mean, you could say that you're going to do the 588 out of this pot now for raises and then take the contingency money that you had for the raises, which was 588, and put it towards these projects. So yes.
I think that is maybe something that we could look at and kind of prioritize our CARES money, what needs to be used now for certain projects to get them off the ground, and maybe what can wait a few months.
Yeah, that's a good thought. Mayor Protem?
Yes, Mayor, I know we've said several times, wait to data, more and more data. And I think some of the data that's coming in is looking pretty good as far as revenue is that, Michael?
It is, it's true. I mean, obviously the...
What were your thoughts on this?
The numbers lag. Well, I mean, I've told you guys, you know, when we first went into this, I thought making a decision before the 1st of January was an unrealistic expectation. But I honestly believe now that if you made a decision that by the end of September, after having a data for, how many months would you have then, Mark, of post-COVID impact? Six months, five months?
Four, I believe.
I still think it's a decent enough representation that you could say, okay, we're back, or okay, we're not quite back, you know? So, you know, what are we in? This is the end of July?
Yeah, it's August, September.
You know, you could release half of it if you wanted, or do, you know, two and a half, whatever, some amount if you felt like the employees were really feeling neglected. But I want you to know that if I felt they were feeling neglected holistically, I'd be the first one up here telling you that. A lot of the folks that I deal with day in and day out are very excited about everything we're trying to do.
Well, I am too.
So.
Well, Michael, my question is, are raises given on anniversary dates, or are they given?
They are. And so if you had an anniversary that was prior to today and you get it next week, you would get pro-rata, or not prorated, you would get your retroactive is the right word. Thank you, John, I appreciate that. You would get your raise as if you'd gotten it July 1, retroactively. So you're not losing any money, you're just losing the cash today. And John made another good point. One thing to consider about cash flow, which isn't a problem, because you got to remember, in the contingency account is the money to give everybody a raise. But if you were worried about that, the Granite Creek Corridor project is a two-year project. So you're splitting the 875, 430, 440?
438, yeah.
Each year. So that's another, so that's another way to look at it.
I guess that's why I keep scratching my head, saying, we got the money, which was deposited today, we got the contingency, let's let the people have their raise on their anniversaries and get the pay compensation study done and move down the road.
And I wouldn't mind doing that. I'm sorry, Mayor, I interrupted you. But I think we're not all of a sudden just writing a check for $588,000.
No. And it's a good point, Councilman. It's, the impact is felt all through the year as everybody's anniversary comes up.
Other questions, comments from the council?
Just in close, I would like to bring everything back to you for real consideration and a decision at the first meeting in August, so.
Great.
Well, I think you hear a lot of consensus up here, Michael. I think you can have some more conversation with individual council members to kind of understand better what you might bring in August. Is that fair?
Yeah, I think so. I'm not hearing from any of you guys that there is something on this list that you're diametrically opposed to, or there may be things you don't want to do, but I guess the larger question for me is, is the vision of what we're trying to do, individual issues aside, like the raises, is this vision what you're comfortable with as a collective? And I hope the answer is yes.
Well, I think you're hearing yes. I'm definitely in favor of everything that's on this list. I think it's a great vision.
So, Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, well, I would like to qualify. My point is that I think the ideas that you've brought, the Center for the Future, the Granite Creek Corridor, I'm certainly not in favor of that last list that used...
No, no, I meant, I meant to...
Okay. So I think this is a great investment for our community, and so, yeah, the sooner the better. I think we need to be really intentional.
And Mayor, it's like being in a fishbowl.
I know.
Just as, you know, if things are brought forward on August 11, for instance, the incubator concept, that's really a vote, I guess, to start, or a direction to start the discussion and negotiation, and then ultimately, an agreement of some sort would have to be negotiated into, and then, so, you know, however long that takes, I think that's the, that would be sort of the formal, opportunity for formal direction, not the final agreement where you're stroking a check on August 12.
Yeah. No, I appreciate that clarification. Councilmember Rusing.
Oh, I have a question for Mr. Lamar. Do you have a number for bringing in the consultants to come up with the plan?
Yeah, the idea for, the maximum amount I've had from any of the, do you have it up there, Tyler?
Yeah, actually, sorry, I'm going to the wrong one. Let me get back out.
It would be 250 for Prescott North and 150 for the corridor, which I actually think is a, well, it may be high, they said that, that this, it may be a bit lower, but I do know that Councilman Good and I looked independently for just the standalone traffic analysis for down, it wasn't even citywide, was it? Maybe it was $400,000.
It was what?
$400,000.
I think we pared it down to 275.
Yeah. So I think these comes in lower than this, but that's the price tag.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question, Mayor?
Quickly.
When you talk about those planned estimates, you know, I know they're estimates and they go up or down, but there's people at NAU, ASU that work on master's projects and do this stuff all the time, and they can, and the cost can go down.
Sure.
Because there are tanks out there that, that's what they do. So I hope we look around to get the best value of what we're trying to achieve there.
Point taken, definitely.
We have a couple of public comments.
I do. Mayor, the public comments that we have were received through the online portal. I know that we're running short on time, so I could certainly just send them on to council for their review, their not specific questions, or just comments about how the fund should be made. And I don't have anyone within the Zoom participation that has raised a hand to address council. So however you'd like us to proceed with that.
Yeah, I think the email's fine on those two public comments, and if there's nobody in Zoom, I think unless there's anything else...
I would just remind the council, depending on how these are sent in email, please do not respond, reply, have a conversation amongst yourselves in the email to avoid any open meeting law issues.
Thank you for that open meeting law reminder.
By the way, there's a training going on at the end of August you're all invited to.
Who's going to be giving it?
I don't think there's anything else here on the agenda. Are we, we done here?
We're done, yeah.
Okay. This meeting is adjourned. We'll be back in five minutes.